Meeting, I'd like to call this Tuesday, June 6, 2023, San Gabriel Regular City Council Meeting to Order at 6:39 PM. Clerk roll call, please. Oh, Pledge of Allegiance, sorry, getting ahead of myself. Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's led by Vice Mayor Wu.
Please follow after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, roll call, please.
Mayor Harrington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wu.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Menchaca.
Here.
Thank you. Closed session report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Councilmembers, council met on one item in closed session under Government Code 54957.6, which is labor negotiations. No reportable actions were taken by the council in closed session.
Thank you. We'll have some announcements from the Chief City Clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on Cable Channel 3 and the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to receive city council agendas, please sign up on the city's website.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda order? Do we have any objections to the agenda order? Hearing none, the order's approved. Next item, please.
Presentations. LGBTQ Pride Month. Mayor Harrington will make the presentation, and Equality California's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training Team Program Manager Wendy Anguiano and Senior Program Associate Alexandra Grisell Gomez will accept the proclamation.
Thank you. So this is for LGBTQ+ Pride Month, whereas the city council and staff have committed to make the San Gabriel an inclusive and welcoming community for all, including the LGBTQ+ community, and whereas Fred, former President Barack Obama designated the first national monument to LGBTQ+ rights in June 2016, honoring the LGBTQ+ community's long-term presence and struggle for equality across the nation, and whereas on June 2023, it marks the 54th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, the city of San Gabriel is dedicated and dedicated to continuing efforts to ensure equality and respect for all. Whereas the city council has established the city's Human Equity Access and Relations Commission, and whereas all members of the San Gabriel community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, and asexual, have the right to feel safe and not be discriminated against and to live without threat of harassment, and whereas the city of San Gabriel takes pride in the fact that we are a vibrant, diverse community and proudly joins other communities in striving to build a stronger, better state and nation for all residents, and whereas the LGBTQ+ community has made great strides, however, work remains in order to achieve full equality, inclusion, and acceptance. Now therefore, I, John Harrington, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, on behalf of the city council, do declare and proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of San Gabriel. Invite everyone to join this special observance. We have someone accepting the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and everyone, council members, and everyone here with us today. As a statewide LGBTQ+ organization, a proclamation in honor of Pride Month means a lot to us. We are honored to be recognized as we continue to fight for LGBTQ+ civil rights, reproductive freedom, racial justice, and create a world that is healthy, just, and fully equal for all LGBTQ+ people. I want to start by thanking the support and collaboration of Community Service Manager Matthew Morales Stevens for his strides in creating a safe and inclusive city, especially for LGBTQ+ young people. It is these types of collaborations that create a sense of community at a local level. Now more than ever, we must come together, celebrate our leaders, reflect our achievements, and recommit ourselves to the ongoing fight for LGBTQ+ rights. Thank you.
Thank you. The council will take a picture. Join us if you'd like to join us here while taking a picture.
Juneteenth Day. Mayor Harrington will make the presentation, and Yannette Elaine, owner of Caribbean Gourmet and one of the original occupants of the Blossom Market Hall, will accept the proclamation.
And the best food, by the way. Whereas Juneteenth, known as Juneteenth Independence Day, Emancipation Day, or Emancipation Celebration, and Freedom Day, is the oldest-known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States and has been celebrated by the Black community for over 150 years, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1883, and declared that "All persons held as slaves within the rebellious states are and henceforth shall be free," paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America, and whereas Juneteenth, or June 19, 1865, is considered the date when the last slaves in America were freed by General Gordon Granger, who rode into Galveston, Texas and issued General Order Number 3, almost two and a half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Juneteenth symbolizes freedom, celebrates the abolishment of slavery, reminds all Americans of the significant contributions of African-Americans to our society, and is the time for reflection and rejoicing and assessment, self-improvement, and planning for the future, and whereas June 19 celebrations are a tribute to those African-Americans then and now who fought so long and worked so hard to make the dream of equality a reality. Now therefore, I, John R. Harrington, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, on behalf of the city council, do declare and proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth Day in the city of San Gabriel, and we invite everyone to recognize this month to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans. Thank you. Like to say any words?
Thank you to the Mayor Harrington, Vice Mayor Wu, and all the councilors Menchaca, Ding, and Chan. Thank you so much. It's an honor to receive this certificate today as an African-American of Caribbean heritage background and a part of this San Gabriel community, having my business here. I am very happy to receive this proclamation. Thank you all. Thanks to everyone else here.
Thank you. So if you'd like to join us for a picture.
Can we get closer, please? Let's get a little closer. Right there.
Thank you.
San Gabriel Library Manager Grace Yang now has an announcement about the library's Juneteenth celebration.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor Harrington, Mr. Vice Mayor Wu, and the members of council, city councils. I'm Grace Yang, the library manager at the San Gabriel Library. At the San Gabriel Library, we got great resources to celebrate Juneteenth. You can find Juneteenth-themed movies and the music, and as well as books that are appropriate for all ages. In addition, the library has scheduled a Juneteenth event on the 15th in recognition of Juneteenth. Library customers in the community will learn about the holiday and decorate a fabric square in the community coat about freedom, family, and the community for display in the library. It's a great opportunity to reflect on the history of Juneteenth. Thank you for all your support for the library services, and we're very grateful for all the support and be part of this wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Community Emergency Response Program, CERT, Completion Recognition. Fire Chief Wallace and Fire Engineer Takahiro Suzuki will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Harrington, Vice Mayor Wu, members of the city council. Thank you for having us. I'd like to do just a quick introduction of CERT, what it is. CERT stands for the Community Emergency Response Team. We teach the community how to mitigate disaster, any type of first aid, lifting heavy objects, mitigating any kind of hazards when first responders are inundated with calls. If we were to have a large earthquake in this area, our first responders were going to be going to hospitals, schools, different infrastructures that could be impacted severely, and it is important that our community members can handle themselves for approximately 72 hours or until help can arrive. And these members here tonight have done 20 hours of training in this curriculum, so I'd like to recognize them. We have two different groups. We have five members of our community and community members from other cities that have completed our program. That's William Hong, Melissa Nono, Ariselli Martinez, Katie Hashima, and Andrew Didya. A lot of these members are leaders in their workplace and are bringing that training back to their workplace, so the word is spreading, and that training is spreading to other community members. The second group that I'd like to bring up is San Gabriel High School's Medical Careers Academy. A lot of these students are looking for careers in the medical field once they graduate high school. A lot of them were seniors and juniors and are going to be the future of our medical careers. They are looking to be doctors, PAs, so you might see them out in our fields, too. So if it's okay with you, Mayor Harrington, and Vice Mayor Wu, as well as the members of the city council, if I could call them up to here so that we could recognize them and take one big group picture?
Certainly, let's go.
Great, thank you. So I'd like to call up the first five. William Hong, Melissa Nono, Ariselli Martinez, Katie Hashima, and Andrew Didya, as well as our students from San Gabriel High School. Shook May Kwan, Samantha Blanco, Michelle Chai, Esther Chan, Adrina Seveas, Winshi Chow Chin, Tina Deng, Victoria Guerrero, Annie Huang, Abby Hu, Mindy Huang, Stephanie Liu, Vivian Lee, I'm almost at the end, Maximilian Lim, Naveen Narong, Beatrice Robels, Kimberly Savedra, Cherry Tao, Alexandra Nguyen, Stephanie Wu, Jimin Yu, and Marlo Yu. I know not everybody could be here due to graduations and other commitments, but we'd like to recognize these 27 members for completing the program. Also, I'd like to bring up Kathleen Loggins. She's a teacher at San Gabriel High School. She is part of the Medical Careers Academy. She was actually a CERT member when Fire Captain Dennis Barwick was training all the, our CERT members. She was part of their, that class. So that completes my presentation. Thank you.
That's great. That's great. Right here. There you go. One, two, three. One? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. Our first comment tonight is from Justo J. Suarez and reads as follows. Need lights on street, Euclid very dark. The next comment is from Dr. Chastity Jennings Nunez, Here Commission Chairperson and Resident, and reads as follows. To the city council members, city manager, and city staff, while approval tonight of the 2324 budget is a possible option for the city council, I hope that they will allow for continued public feedback, staff research, and input on those areas that they have specifically directed to the Here Commission for recommendations. The Here Commission does not have its regular meeting until May 27. The annual budget adoption timeline allows for continued discussion and modifications at least until the next city council meeting. As stated in the information meeting on June 3, there is over $600,000 in surplus that is potentially available to address mental health issues and access for our residents. Mental health was one of the top three funding priorities in the community, beating out the narrowly-defined public safety category, which came in as number six in the survey. Two, thank you to City Manager Lazaretto, Will Kohola Hula, the City Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director Linda Tang for making themselves available on Saturday for a very informative and open explanation of the city budget. They spent over two hours of their time giving a great presentation and, more importantly, answering very thoughtful questions from the audience of community members. It is disappointing that neither the livestream nor the recording is available for those who were unable to attend the meeting. I appreciate that the slides are posted, but would suggest that a recording be created of the presentation incorporating as many of the questions answered in the meeting as they can remember. This recording can then be posted this week. Three, finally, thank you, Ms. Elaine, for being an active member of the San Gabriel community. As a local business owner, your participation in city government is vital, and I appreciate you accepting the Juneteenth proclamation. Juneteenth celebrates the announcement of freedom from slavery for millions of African-Americans, and I hope that San Gabriel will attract and welcome other Black-owned businesses and businesses that center and celebrate African-American culture. The next comment is from Bill Lamb and reads as follows. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to talk about public transit. Metro Line 176 used to run on Mission Road going through the city of San Gabriel until it was discontinued on 6/27/2021 due to low ridership as part of the Next Gen Bus Plan second-phase service changes. Since then, there is no other alternatives available to get around but to only walk at least 10, 20, or 30-plus minutes from their homes in order to catch the bus on Ramona, Metro 487, Las Tunas, Metro 78, San Gabriel, Montemello 20, and Valley, Metro 76. My solution on recovering the lost ridership on Mission Road after the cancellation of Metro Line 176 is to consider creating a city's fixed route transit service that can serve Mission Road running east and west between Huntington Drive and Alhambra and the Flair Business Park area, which replaces the former part of Metro Line 176 segment so that people can catch it from Mission Road instead of walking far down to either Ramona, Las Tunas, San Gabriel, or Valley to catch a bus. Also, you should consider adding another city's fixed route transit service that can run north and south on Delmar Boulevard, serving between the shops at Montebello and Sierra Madre Villa Station, so that people can cut down their walking time to catch a bus and also can access their public transit near their homes. I have attached the two maps of my own proposed city's fixed route transit service that are shown below, along with the Metro Line 176 cancellation map with alternatives, and I am happy to discuss more about these in detail if it's possible. Thank you very much for your time, and those attachments will be forwarded to council after the meeting. Our first in-person speaker this evening is Sue Fitzsimmons.
Mayor Harrington, Vice Mayor, City Council, good evening. Sue Fitzsimmons, I'm here to talk about two things. First of all, I want to give a shout-out to the fire department for a job well done for their open house that they had. Wow, what a turnout. It was amazing. I also want to give a shout-out to Chief Chris Ekman. He personally invited me, my K-9 handler Paul, and our K-9 to the event, to their house, to come and to share with all the people our K-9, and it was amazing. It was amazing. We thank them, and we're here for you anytime you need us. The other thing that I'm here for this evening is that I'm very concerned about our city and a lot of the yards that are very overgrown. It's very sad to drive around, especially the village, and see a lot of these yards that are uncut. The weeds are three to four foot tall, and as the spring is turning into summer, these are drying out. These are going to be, create a fire hazard. I'm sure the fire department is concerned about that as well. Plus, it doesn't look very good for our city. If you drive down Delmar coming from another city and you look at all these unmaintained properties, what people must think about us and our city? Gee, they don't care? You know, what's going on? There has to be a way that people that own property, they need to maintain it. They also need to maintain the parkway. Even though the parkway is part of the city, my understanding as an owner of property, it is our responsibility to maintain the parkways. They're not being maintained at all. The weeds are getting very out of hand. Mark, I don't know, is this something that I can address to you? I know you're not supposed to comment, but something needs to be done. There is a house at the corner of Orange and Manly. I am really fearful for the resident. If that grass catches on fire, his house is gone, plus the neighbor's houses, too. And there's another house on Ramona that the weeds are over five foot high. What do we do, Mark?
Ms. Fitzsimmons, are you done with your comments?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. I can't respond to those comments in particular, but I will give a public service shout-out that if anybody has houses or properties of any kind that they're concerned about, I would suggest they call code enforcement, and we will get to those right away. We follow up on every code case, and we close out several hundred code cases a year, so I would be more than happy to put that number out to the community.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, then I can also put that out as well.
Awesome.
Thank you, all of you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Sato.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed council members. I want to give a shout-out, or I'd like you to recognize Maria Sanchez. She is a code enfor, the senior code enforcement officer, and I have had nothing but positive interactions with her, stemming from people using our trash cans illegally and to the messes that people have in our house. So she's been wonderful, she's been very responsive, Mark. She's terrific, so thank you very much. The second reason I'm here, and I'd like to go on record about this, is a residence on my street, 824 Abbott Avenue. They have been a source of irritation for a long time, and it's not anything but unmaintained yards, trash. They do not pay for their trash, so Athens will not pick up their trash anymore. They were caught using the neighbor's trash cans, and Ms. Sanchez put a stop to that for us. But now, they opened up some gates on their property that faces the street. It is filled with trash, all kinds of trash, and if you look in their backyard, you can see wrecked cars. Then, most recently, they brought in a construction trailer, the type that you see on a construction site, and I believe that they're going to try to use that as an ADU, and I don't know if that's eligible as an ADU. There is just a litany of things going wrong with that house, and it's ranging from fire, the garage burning down, to trash in their house, mattresses, things. I submitted a request to the Health Department because Ms. Sanchez is working within her restrictions and her conditions of the city, but I firmly believe that that is a house that's going to be enticed for vermin, rats, and I, we took some pictures, my neighbor and I took some photographs, and I have submitted them to Ms. Sanchez. And I didn't print any out tonight, but they're really bad. So just for the record, 824, there is a problem there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christine Sereno.
Hi, everyone. This is my first time at a city council meeting. I'm here on behalf of my mom, who's sitting down in the back there with the black mask, and we're building a house right now, and I was looking thoroughly through our plans and noticed an impact fee notice that was dated August 5, 2019, and now it's 2023. It was 12, about 12,000 grand, and we didn't see that notice until now. My mom is kind of stressing out because of all the added fees that we didn't anticipate because it's her first time building a house here. We've lived here for like, where my parents lived here for over 40 years, and on that impact fee notice, it says, "You guys give us a 90-day window to protest," but since that was back in 2019, and I just saw this now, that 90-day window is long gone. So I went about to Public Works and asked them if there was anything we can do or they can do to help us, and they said they can't do anything, that this was all, the fees are all built up from the city council. So I was just wondering if there's any way that you guys can give my parents another chance at that 90-day window to try to protest the fees, and I'm not sure if that's allowed.
Christina, unfortunately, we can't talk about it tonight because it's not on the agenda, but please talk with Greg Davink, our Public Works director in the back. You've probably spoken with him already. Give him your information, and if there's anything we can do, we will.
Okay.
Otherwise...
Okay, okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Sure.
Our next speaker is Debbie Cordero.
This is my first time here. Let me collect my thoughts. I know I only have three minutes. My name is Debbie Cordero. I am a daughter of a Marine. My dad, David Cordero, is on your beautiful honor wall. I'd like to say thank you to the individuals that had a dream to build that honor wall. The photos, when you look at them, you could feel history. I'd like to say I think it's time we find a permanent home for those veterans and others that are not on that honor wall with the photographs. At this time, we bring out that beautiful creation that individuals with honor and respect put their heart and soul into that. We only get to see that a few times throughout the year. That's Memorial Day, sometimes it's out in the library or city hall, 4th of July, and Veterans Day. It's sad when they have to house that somewhere in the dark where no one can honor.
My name is Debbie Cordero. I am a daughter of a Marine. My dad, David Cordero, is on your beautiful honor wall. I'd like to say thank you to the individuals that had a dream to build that honor wall. The photos, when you look at them, you could feel history. I'd like to say, I think it's time we find a permanent home for those veterans and others that are not on that honor wall with the photographs. At this time, we bring out that beautiful creation that individuals with honor and respect put their heart and soul into that. We only get to see that a few times throughout the year. That's Memorial Day, sometimes it's out in the library or City Hall, 4th of July, and Veterans Day. It's sad when they have to house that somewhere in the dark where no one can honor those veterans. We can't be putting our veterans away like that. I think it's time we look at placing a permanent memorial in this beautiful city of San Gabriel, where everything started at Smith Park, where all of us can enjoy whenever, in the light, with family and friends, whether we're by ourselves, or when we're with a group. That's my wish, and I truly hope, as a longtime resident, our family's been here many, many generations, that we get to celebrate what our veterans have done, the freedom that we have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sonia Villasenor.
Honorable Mayor Harrington and City Council members. My name is Sonia Villasenor. I am a United States Marine Corps veteran and one of several San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition members, board members, who will speak tonight. It is fitting that veterans, the Veterans Memorial, speak to the City Council today. Today is the 79th anniversary of D-Day. We, we don't know for sure that any young men from San Gabriel hit the beaches of Normandy, but what we do know is that some of our native sons died in the fields and forests of Europe during that war. We honor them tonight. San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition is a California nonprofit organization. Our primary mission is to identify honorable discharged military veterans born and who lived in San Gabriel, and to erect a memorial to honor them. Our goal this evening is to urge the San Gabriel, the city of San Gabriel, to reserve the northeast corner of Smith Park as the location of the further Veterans Memorial Monument. Other board members will walk you through our journey so far and present plans for our dream. That dream is a dynamic Veterans Memorial that will be placed on high honor for our veterans. It will also be a gathering place for the community, a shrine for gratitude, and to those who defend the freedoms that we, who come from all parts of the world to San Gabriel, exercise in our city every day, and which I am excited right now. Exercising right now, excuse me. We believe that if you listen to us with open minds, you will share the excitement we have for accomplishing this goal, and will want to partner with us in this dream. San Gabriel, the oldest community in Los Angeles County, is one of the few cities that does not have a worthy Veterans Memorial. Together, the City Council and the Veterans Memorial Coalition can take the first steps to correct that oversight. Together, we can launch a project that will welcome and honor past, present, and future veterans with their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Tovar.
Honorable Mayor Harrington and City Council members, my name is Daniel Tovar, and I was a U.S. Army veteran, member of San Gabriel Veteran Memorial Coalition and Board of Directors. San Gabriel Veteran Memorial Monument, we proposed tonight has more than one purpose. But most important is to recognize the names, rank, and air of the service of every veteran living, missing in action, deceased, who were born or lived in San Gabriel and who are honorably discharged. And some of his name will appear on that is Veteran Memorial are George S. Patton, General, Major General of the United States Army. General Patton was born in San Gabriel and was one of the heroes in WWII. Seaman Second Class Reneer Agiri, Seaman Agiri was killed aboard the USS Arizona in Pearl Harbor on December 7, 1941. That makes him one of the first killed in action in WWII. Tok Yoshi Hashi turned 100 years old. Mr. Yoshi Hashi was a member of the U.S. Army 100th Battalion and later the legendary 442nd Regiment Gulf War Broke Combat Team. Sergeant Furman De La Rosa Jr. Sergeant De La Rosa was awarded the Silver and Bronze with Valor Medal for Valor in combat during war in Vietnam, the Purple Heart Medal for his wounds in battle. Private First Class De La Rosa was given a battlefield promotion to Sergeant, to Sergeant in recognition of his brave effort for defending his comrades. The role of this, of those who served honorably and defended our freedom includes distinguished warriors, to be sure. But they also include veterans who served without fanfare or fame, veterans who set aside plans and dreams, who served at peacetime as well as wartime. All these men and women deserve recognition of a grateful community for their purpose, their part in the defending our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Acosta.
Honorable Mayor Harrington, Honorable City Council, my name is Daniel Acosta. I'm a proud U.S. Army veteran, and I'm the son, proud son of a U.S. Army veteran. I'm also a board member of the San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition. If you were to travel around the Southland and visit various Veterans Memorials, you generally, generally would see three types of monuments. The first type of monument honors all veterans of all wars. There are no individual names, simply a statement of gratitude to a city's veterans. The second type of monument remembers the dead of a particular war, and these might list the names of the city's soldiers killed in combat in that war. The third type is a memorial to all the veterans of a particular war without individual names. In contrast to the aforementioned memorials, the San Gabriel Veterans Memorial will include the names of individual veterans of all eras, their rank at honorable discharge, and the era in which the veteran served. Names of veterans will be continually added as they are registered with the Veterans Memorial Coalition by the veterans themselves or by their family or friends. The San Gabriel Veterans Memorial will be dynamic in another way. It will be designed to serve as a venue for public and civic gatherings. A small dais will offer a platform for speakers, and the monument's design would accommodate a larger temporary stage for larger events and entertainment. The lawn between the Smith Park swimming pool, swimming pool and the basketball and handball courts would provide a wonderful amphitheater, allowing seating for hundreds of spectators. It would make a most appropriate venue to recognize our active-duty military residents on Armed Forces Day, to mourn our fallen warriors on Memorial Day, to celebrate our nation's independence on the 4th of July, and to honor our military veterans on Veterans Day. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Raymond Diaz.
Honorable Mayor Harrington and City Council members, my name is Raymond Diaz. I am the son of a United States Army Air Force veteran and a board member of the San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition. Last week, each of you on the council received a three-dimensional rendering video of the proposed San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Monument. We hope you have taken time to view the 62nd panoramic video. At the end of our presentation, we would like you to air it for all in attendance here and online. The San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition is asking the City Council to allocate a plot of ground 75 feet by 75 feet in an area in the northeast corner of Smith Park as a location for our veterans monument. This is roughly the size of the play area that presently occupies that space. The monument will not affect the basketball courts in 88, any significant loss of lawn. The nearby legacy oak trees would not be affected. The monument would include an honor wall that would bear the name of San Gabriel's honorably discharged military veterans, past, present, and future. A second wall would bear the names of those San Gabriel's sons and daughters killed or missing in action. Both walls would flank a small platform large enough to feature a podium and several chairs. The platform would be covered to shield from the rain and sunshine. The monument area would also feature landscape with benches for rest and reflection, and a selection of beautiful plants and flowers. The American flag and logos of seven branches of the Armed Forces would complete the monument. The entire monument area would be ADA compliant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Cervantes.
Honorable Mayor Harrington and City Council members, my name is Richard Cervantes. I'm a United States Army veteran and the son of a United States Army veteran and a member of the San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition. Before coming to you with our request for a memorial site, we asked and received feedback from the city, from the San Gabriel community. At this point in our presentation, we would like to share those comments and questions with you. Question number one, why do we need a Veterans Memorial in San Gabriel? Our first speaker, Sonia Villasenor, had mentioned the lack of significant city recognition of our San Gabriel veterans. The monument we propose would remedy that absence. It would remind present and future San Gabriel residents that freedom is not free, and that San Gabriel veterans made the sacrifices necessary to safeguard those freedoms. Question number two, why Smith Park? We are asking for the site of the monument to be built at Smith Park for two reasons. First, Smith Park is San Gabriel Central Park and the place most fitting for honoring our veterans from every corner of San Gabriel. Second, which I think is the most important, Smith, Smith Park has historically been a place of inclusion and acceptance of all residents. There was a time in the past when San Gabriel was a city segregated by race. While, while other, while other local cities made racial segregation obvious in their parks and pools, Smith Park welcomed all San Gabriel's adults and children regardless of race. It is to honor this legacy of inclusion that our coalition chose Smith Park, and upon learning of this heritage of inclusion, members of the community have agreed that Smith Park should be the site. Question number three, won't the memorial take away much-needed green space from the little that San Gabriel has? By our measurements, only 6.5% of the memorial space would require removal of lawn. Most of the area we propose for the memorial is already sand, is already sand and concrete. Question number four, how much will the memorial cost and who will pay for it? It is our informed estimation that the memorial would cost up to $500,000. The bulk of the cost would come from donations from individuals, corporations, foundation, and government grants. We would ask the city of San Gabriel to contribute to the construction, maintenance, or both. Funds could come from the city beautification budget or other city initiatives. Corporate sponsors are lining up to add their funds to this project as soon as the land is secured for the memorial. The San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition will create a Friends of San Gabriel Veterans Memorial to help raise funds, to help defray maintenance costs. We ask that the city include the construction and/or maintenance of the memorial in its yearly city beautification budgets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Justiniani.
Honorable Mayor Harrington and City Council members, my name is Teresa Olivas-Husiani, and I am the niece of Sergeant Furman De La Rosa Jr., the wife of a United States Army veteran and a board member of the San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition. I would like to continue sharing feedback from the community. Question five, what if I don't like the design of the Veterans Memorial? Of course, beauty is the eye of the beholder. No one design will please everyone. The Coalition asked Fernando Solis of ADI Architecture to create a rendering that would express the spirit of Veterans Memorial Monument. What you saw in our video was only one vision of our dream. We look forward, forward to working with the City Council and its commissions and departments to ensure that the memorial design is the best we can make, it in a harmony with the spirit of the city with the mission. Question number six, how will you collect the names of the San Gabriel veterans? We already have a veterans register in place at www.sangabrevetermemorial.org. In addition, once you approve the memorial site, we will launch a multimedia campaign to find our San Gabriel veterans and gather their military information. Question seven, aren't you worried about vandalism? The Coalition has consulted other organizations that have built veterans memorials, and they report that the vandalism is not a problem. We will address the issue of vandalism with experts in the construction field as we design the monument. Question number eight, how will people be able to find their or their loved ones' name on the memorial? The Coalition will have an online directory to assist the locations of individual veterans. We can also provide a printed directory to be kept at the City Hall. Question number nine, what do you want from the City Council? The San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition is asking the City Council to designate the 75 feet by 75 feet northeast corner of Smith Park as a site of Veterans Memorial. We are asking that the land be reserved for five years to allow the Coalition to do all the work required to have the site shovel-ready by Veterans Day 2028. The San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition does not expect you to make a decision on our request tonight. We ask that you please put our proposal on a future agenda soon, and let us know when you would discuss and vote our request. We look forward to working with the city of the San Gabriel to make the dream of a Veterans Memorial Monument in Smith Park a reality. We have gathered a petition from supportive residents, which we will hand deliver to you, Mayor Harrington. Finally, we would like to share with you and the audience the 62nd video of the Spirit of Veterans Memorial that we emailed to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Trevino.
Mayor Harrington, members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Charles Trevino, as you heard, and I'm here as an Army veteran who served during the Vietnam era. And I'm here in support of building and maintaining the San Gabriel Military Veterans Wall of Honor. I feel that it is very fitting for the city of San Gabriel to show its gratitude to the those who have served and those especially who gave all, so that we may be able to, in order to, for us to be able to preserve and protect the freedom we enjoy today. So I, I... So I, I, I beseech you to please consider this, this item and consider your support for this item. Again, thank you for allowing me the time to address you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no more speaker cards.
Okay, so the city does not have a video. Is there something we could get?
Mayor, I passed a, a thumb drive to, to Sam and I was hoping that you could plug it in and, and show it on the screen.
Yeah, if, if the technology works.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's been our failure lately.
If not, it's on our website at www.sangabroveteransmemorial.org. May I add that it's obviously larger than scale, that we would scale it down appropriate to the site. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all the speakers' request cards we have. Are there any other members of the audience who'd like to address council on any topics outside of the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine. Recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received a request from the public to pull an item. However, we do have speakers that would like to address the council on item number four J.
Thank you. Are there any council members like to pull any other items?
I would like to pull the item J from the consent calendar.
Yeah, we'll pull that, I just said other than J. So we can, uh, any other items besides J? All right, seeing none, none in the audience either, we will vote on the balance without J first.
So I'll move to approve all consent items except for J.
I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Minchaca and a second by Councilmember Chan. Are you abstaining? There we go.
Motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. We'll go on to item J. Um, we'll take the public comments. First up is Donna Chen.
Good evening, Mayor John Huntington, Vice Mayor John Yu, and Councilmember Denise Pajanga, Tony Ding, and Eric Cheng. Good evening. My name is Donna Chen and I am the president of Asian Arts Talent Foundation. A nonprofit organization was founded in 2003. It's 20 years. Today, I'm here to kindly ask for your support in waiving the fee to using Mission Playhouse in our 20-year anniversary celebration. While we appreciate the consideration of the parcel fee waiver mentioned in the city meeting agenda, the suggestion of your amount is $3,130. Fair is not enough. Fair short is our financial need. Thus, I sincerely request the city council to consider providing additional support to make this event financially viable and, uh, for our organization. Over the past two decades, our organization have been dedicated to serving the community by providing variable learning opportunity to the younger generation and low-income family. We strive to help them understand different culture, explore their heritage, and nurture their talents. Additionally, during the pandemic, we actively participated in various PPE programs and fundraising to support and donate supply to the community, including the fire department, police department, the city hospital, senior home, and city of San Gabriel. We firmly believe that if the city can waive the fee for this event, it will greatly appreciate it and contribute to our organization substantially and allow us to expand our activity for the younger generation. This, in turn, I will, uh, it will benefit low-income family and provide even better service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charles Chow.
Good evening, Mayor Harrington, Vice Mayor Wu, and all the council members. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to voice our opinion. My name is Charles Chow. I'm the vice president of the Asian Arts Talents Foundation. And, uh, tonight I just wanted to add to Donna's statement earlier. As you're probably aware, that our operation is based heavily on donations. And the COVID-19 pandemic resulting in economic fallout and the rising cost of livings is affecting every one of us here. And our organization is no exception. We are here tonight requesting the city to consider to provide more assistance financially to our organization by utilizing this Mission Playhouse for this upcoming event, which we feel this event would make an impact to our community. And this financial support was really helpful to us. And after all, and we want to continue our mission together in the long run. And the San Gabriel, after all, is a city with ambition. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jenny Lam.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Jenny Lam and I'm a parent who is speaking on behalf of ATF. Let me begin by saying that my daughter joined ATF when she was in kindergarten and she'll be a senior next year. During the 12 years, I have witnessed how ATF have not only enriched my daughter's life, but the lives of all the other dancers, the families, and the communities as well. ATF enriches the lives of the dancers and the communities by promoting culture and building relationships with the communities through the many performances that our dancers perform in. For example, ATF dancers have performed multiple times in the city of San Gabriel. Through those performances, the citizens of San Gabriel learned about Asian folk dances from the traditional, through the, uh, from the traditional costumes worn by the dancers and props used by them, which are all very expensive. As mentioned by Ms. Donna Chen, ATF is a nonprofit organization relying solely on donations and volunteers alone. I'm asking that you, the mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and the city council members to reconsider providing additional funding beyond the suggested amount of $3,130 for the rental of San Gabriel Mission Playhouse. Doing so will allow ATF to continue to promote culture, give back to the communities, and build relationships with the families and the communities like the beautiful city of San Gabriel. Thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carissa Ho.
Good evening, mayors and council members. My name is Carissa and I'm a student from the Asian Arts Talents Foundation. I have been a part of this nonprofit foundation since 2019, uh, 2009 and strive to promote the foundation's purpose, which is to explore and spread our Chinese culture through dance. However, with the pandemic happening, we were unable to make enough funds for our performances. Our foundation continues to help the community by sending out masks, fundraising, et cetera. And I hope that the community would gather together and help to support our foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the final speaker's card. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to council comments or deliberation. Don, you pulled it. You want to start?
Let me start it. But I, um, well, before we move to any decision, I just want to make sure that our city has budgeted $5,000. That is annual rental subsidy account. So, uh, for approving or increasing the waiver from $3,130 to $4,530, there will be no, uh, financial impact to the city. Is that correct, Mark?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Okay. Let me understand this correctly because it says here in, in the agenda, 5,000, but we expect it to be fully used by the end of the year. Is someone else using that money or?
We do, and I'll let Director Perez speak to that. We have several groups that, although they don't come to council, they are ongoing groups that have been approved in the past. And so I, I spoke too quickly. We would need an increase in that fee waiver, which I'm sure Director Perez is going to politely correct.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. City Manager Lazzaro is correct, so that, that funding is already utilized and the fee subsidy would need to be increased to be able to, to utilize for this.
So, um, you know, this is a group that, uh, been around for 20 years. And I know a lot of the members, they are, especially during COVID, when I was mayor, they were critical. They were our partners. Uh, they were there when we needed them. And, um, and they continue to be there when we need them. I, um, you know, I, I feel very strongly about the arts and I want them to stay at the Mission Playhouse. And I think whatever we can do to keep them here and continue this tradition of providing a free event. It is very hard to have this caliber of event brought to the Mission Playhouse at no cost to the residents or to anyone, for that matter. We have a lot of productions at the Mission Playhouse, but most of them are cost prohibitive. And this is a very, um, unique program. It includes our, our, our youth and includes, includes all ages, actually. And, um, you know, they're celebrating, like I said, they're, well, they're celebrating their 20th anniversary. And although we've already, um, used the, the budget, it is not an, um, an exceptional amount. We can't get a production for 4,530, which is the waiver that they're asking. We're suggesting, or the staff has suggested 3,130. So I am, I like to propose that we do, um, increase it to 4,530 and, um, you know, that, those are my reasons. So, thank you.
Anyone else with further comment?
I could use a second.
Was that a motion?
That was, that was an official motion.
I heard you say.
But I want to have.
I like to motion that we increase it to 4,530.
Let me speak a little bit, maybe increase it, okay. I, I, I'm a witness with the organization. When they established the Donna Chen, they are a group of people like Charles. They spent 20 years to service our community. And also to every two years have a performance in our city. It's already 10 times already. So for, yeah, I know we have budget, the 5,000, but we also need some feedback. Especially I saw them help our low-income, the community, uh, the, the family. The kids have learning Chinese folk dancing. And plus, they have a lot of event, well, especially for our Lunar New Year, they have a good performance too. And, uh, with the, with the pandemic, they, they also do the fundraising for our community, for the PPE distribution. So I saw a lot of the, they are not just teach the kids for the Chinese culture, but they also teach the kids for how to do the return to the community. So for mine is, uh, feel bad, it's like even like, they already use our facility. It's never asking any, like, some waiver before, right? That's first time, right? Okay. So even, even 10 years, even we waived them the total amount. For us, for our city, it's only 10% of the discount. You know, the 10 years, 10 times already, right? So for the, for the long run, the two, this is because especially for the 20 years. So I, from my heart, it's really want to support them. Even for our city, it's reasonable, it's only, I, like, I, I must calculate it. It's only discount for the, every year, it's 10% about that. So my propose is a waiver entire amount, but also see what's the rest of the, our council members think about it. Okay, so I, I accept any amount, but if you want me propose, I propose it's entire amount.
Mr. Mayor, if I might provide just a little bit of feedback.
Certainly.
When I spoke very quickly to Vice Mayor Wu's response of whether there's a fiscal impact, the reason that I was quick on that response is because we, basically when we waive the fee for the building, it's an accounting exercise. We put money into the budget for an offset of the revenue and then we put it in expense for the $5,000. And when we don't get the revenue, we basically cancel those out. So if council wants to waive the fee to the building, that doesn't really cost us anything. Whether we increase the amount or not, it just means less revenue to the city, but we increase the expenses. So it all balances out. If council wants to do more than the 4,530, those remaining costs are costs that are actually borne by the city, which are staffing costs, which are costs for our insurances, overhead, those kinds of things. So I'm not saying the council can't or shouldn't do that. I just want that information, that that's actually money that would come out of the budget and there would be a, a cost for that. And I do think maybe there was a misunderstanding of the question, but we have provided fee waivers in the past for this group. So this would not be the first time.
Okay. Oh.
Which again, it doesn't change the, the council action. You can do whatever you want. I just want.
Thank you. Thank you. Clarify. Okay. So, yeah, but, but also, Mayor, I, I have, for my feeling, feeling, because this organization, they have a lot of students or family, also the, it's a San Gabriel city that resident. And the, this culture, that they are help the kids. Also, it's really help our, really right now want to do the community service called the mental health. That really help the kids have confidence, confidence, they, in our society and the community. You know, they, that I, I saw this kind of really good impact for our city, our community too. So that's why. So that's why I, my feeling, it's, it's more waiver for them, you know, but based on our rest of council member.
So add a little bit of a legal wrinkle.
Okay.
We can't waive more than was put on the agenda. That's what the city attorney is telling me. Because of what they requested, that caps what we could take action on. So because of the Brown Act, we only have a certain amount.
Okay.
That we can waive, which is the maximum they asked for, which was the forty-three fifty. So that's what we could take action on tonight.
Forty-five thirty.
Five thirty, I'm sorry. Dyslexia.
Okay.
And that was my motion is for the full waiver, which is four thousand five thirty.
I'll second.
We had one motion. That was an official motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Machaca, second by Vice Mayor Wu. Let's vote, please. Motion passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, next item, please.
Public hearing, adoption of proposed operating budget, capital improvement program, fee schedule, position classification and salary schedule, and appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, I now open the public hearing. Finance Director Kula Kula will make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. Wilco Kula, finance director for the city of San Gabriel. Tonight, it is my pleasure to present the proposed operating budget, capital improvement program, fee schedule, position, classification and salary schedule, and the appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Little technical difficulty? It's kind of the theme for the week. All right, back on track. Just to give some background on the budget process timeline that has taken place up to this point. So in January, February, two thousand and twenty-three, the, the budget process is initiated. The city manager provides direction, the city staff, who drafts expenditure plans, revenue estimates and capital improvement programs. Then from February through April, two thousand and twenty-three, the city manager, along with finance staff, meets multiple times to conduct budget meetings and then ultimately developing a draft budget document. And then on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, as the city council knows, we conducted a public budget study session to review, ask questions and analyze the budget. And then from there, in May, two thousand and twenty-three, city council members met as individuals with the city manager and finance staff to review and to continue to analyze the budget. Also, May, two thousand and twenty-three, based on city council's direction, a community budget survey was conducted for, which we'll talk about at the end of the presentation. And then in June, two thousand and twenty-three, on Saturday, at the San Gabriel Library, a community budget meeting was held to answer financial questions about the city as well as the expenditures and revenues of the upcoming budget, as well as the capital improvement program. There were approximately twenty-five to thirty people who attended the meeting. The meeting lasted for about two hours. Multiple items were discussed. There were additional items that were brought up by the community members who attended, like mental health, the idea of a future police station, homelessness, the Smith Park pool and fireworks. And then tonight, we are conducting a public hearing on the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Here is a summary of our twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So the general fund budget is balanced with a slight surplus of six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Our projected general fund reserves at the end of the upcoming fiscal year is projected to be twelve point nine million or twenty-five point three percent. Citywide operating expenditures is ninety-two point six four million, make, combined with total twenty-five city funds. And then our capital improvement program is made up of sixteen million dollars, which we'll talk about in more detail on the next slides. So first we'll take a look at the all city funds budgeted expenditures. Total citywide expenditures is ninety-two million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand. The general fund makes a fifty-five percent of the all city funds budget. Special revenue funds, thirty-seven percent. And internal service funds, eight percent. As far as expenditure type, operating expenditures consist of nearly seventy-six million. And we have our capital improvement program at sixteen million, seven hundred and one thousand. Moving on to the general fund. As mentioned earlier, the general fund is balanced with a slight surplus of six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Revenue, revenues are projected to be about fifty-one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which is an increase from prior year adopted budget of nearly five million dollars. Taxes is the major driver of the revenue increases. Proposed expenditures are fifty point nine million dollars, which is higher by nearly four point seven million from the prior year adopted. And personnel cost is the major driver of the increases in expenditures. This slide presents the general fund revenues for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So general fund revenues continue the upward trend that we experienced during this fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four. Taxes make up the majority of general fund revenues at sixty-seven percent, followed by a transferred in from the retirement fund of, which makes up about nineteen percent. All revenues are projected to be higher, except for fines and forfeitures. And taxes has the biggest increase from the prior year with an increase of over three point six, six million, followed by transfers in from the retirement fund of an increase of four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So on the next slide, we'll take a little bit closer look, detailed look at general fund taxes. So all of our tax categories are projected to increase, except for business license tax. Property tax is the largest generator in tax revenue for, is the largest generator of revenue for the city. We have property tax, which is the assessment that is made on city property values, as well as we have a property tax that we, we received in lieu of vehicle license fees that was exchanged in the early two thousands. Property tax is a, is a stable, has been a stable and consistent revenue source over the years. Additionally, to highlight, we have, there is measure SG, which is the sales and use tax that was passed by city voters in March of two thousand and twenty. Is projected to bring in about five point two million, which is an increase of nearly one million dollars. This is the third year since measure SG was passed by voters. Measure SG has been critical to maintaining city services and building reserves. So overall, general fund tax revenue is projected to increase by over three point six million dollars. Moving on to general fund expenditures. So general fund expenditure, proposed expenditures are higher by four point seven million. The largest expenditure category for the general fund is personnel, which makes up about seventy percent, seventy-six percent of all expenditures. Personnel expenditures are higher by three point two million due to salary increase from approved labor agreements, higher normal pension contributions due to lowering of the discount rate and the higher salaries and the funding of a fifty-fourth police officer position. All of our general fund expenditure categories have increases, except for debt service, which is lower by three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's due to the paying off of the public works loan, which has saved the city about three hundred fifty thousand dollars in this upcoming budget. Based on the proposed budget, the general fund is projected to have general fund reserves of about twelve point nine million, which equates to a reserve percentage of twenty-five point three percent, per the, which is about three months of operating expenditures. Per our city reserve policy, our minimum reserve percentage is seventeen percent, which is about two months of operating expenditures. So, and then we can see as we project to further in, over the next two years, that the reserves is projected to increase to nearly thirty percent by twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. Healthy reserves will put the city in a better position to withstand economic downturns, natural disasters, pandemics. Additionally, higher reserves can help the city fund one-time capital expenditures as well as improve the city's bond rating. Special revenue funds. So funds received with restricted uses are recorded in our special revenues funds. This slide presents the special revenue fund expenditures by their restricted uses. You can see transportation is the largest restricted funds that, that we received. And this is for the dial-a-ride program to maintenance and improvements of city streets. So after transportation, we have retirement, sewer, the Mission Playhouse, park improvements, public safety, community services, stormwater, waste management and affordable housing. Moving on to our internal service funds. So internal service funds are city funds that provide services to other city departments. So we have our fleet services fund, which provides maintenance and for vehicles and replacement of vehicles. There are, there are budgeted in the fleet services, fleet services fund, multiple vehicle replacements, include, including a fire command vehicle, a fire apparatus financed over five years. These are all budgeted, which will be brought, brought back to the council at a later, at a later date. We have three police patrol vehicles and, and one police motorcycle vehicle. Next, we have a risk management, which is basically our workers' comp insurance and general liability insurance. And finally, we have our information technology, where our information technology internal service provides IT services to all city funds, all city departments. Moving on to staffing. There are a hundred and ninety-eight full-time funded positions for the upcoming fiscal year. One additional position was funded in fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, a fifty-fourth police officer position. Additionally, there have been incremental staffing changes made in the police department, community development department and community services department, as well as incremental changes to certain part-time positions. Moving on to the capital improvement program. So as, as mentioned earlier, the capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four includes new funding of sixteen point seven million, which will fund twenty projects. One point seven million is in the capital improvement program is for the annual streets program. There has been four hundred and forty thousand dollars from the general fund for public facility improvements. And this slide presents our capital improvement program by project type. Receiving the most funding on the left is for intersection improvements from funding received from the seven-ten measure R funds, followed by traffic signal improvements, street resurfacing, public facilities, storm drain, park improvements, affordable housing program, bridge repairs and then curbs and ramps. Then moving on to our master fee schedule. At the city council meeting on April eighteenth, an updated master fee schedule was presented to the city council, where new fees were added and clarified to better charge for city services. Many of the fees were adjusted by the January Consumer Price Index for the Los Angeles area. And then since that April eighteenth meeting, one fee has been added to the master fee schedule, which is a fee for a nonprofit agency rental of the Mission Playhouse. So moving on to the annual appropriations limit. So on an annual basis, the city is required to adopt an annual appropriations limit, which limits the amount of tax revenue that the city can budget. So based on the calculation that was performed this year, the city is eighteen million, three hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five below the, below the limit. And then next we have the community survey. So based on city council direction, staff was asked to conduct a community survey, community budget survey to propose the question of where would the community like to allocate additional funds? The survey was opened for twenty-two, was received for twenty-two days in May. There was a hundred and seventy-four responses and the survey, the results of the survey are thirty-six point two percent of the respondents voted that they would allocate the funds to improve city infrastructure, twenty-six point four percent to improve our parks, seventeen point eight percent focus on mental health services, seventeen point two percent improve our special events, seventeen point two percent also save our, save for future needs in a rainy day fund, sixteen point seven percent to expand public safety services and, and one point one percent in the other category. So except for, except for mental health, the city budget directly addresses the desire of the community, including under improved city infrastructure. We have a sixteen point seven million capital improvement program. We've added four hundred and forty thousand of general fund money for roof replacements at Magrodi and Fire Station fifty-one. Improved special events, our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget includes fifty thousand to add or improve special events. Under improved parks, we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the budget for pickleball courts at Smith Park. Under expand public safety services, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand for prosecution services, a hundred and nineteen thousand to add a fifty-fourth police officer. And save for a rainy day, we have a surplus of six hundred and sixty-five thousand that will be added to the reserves, plus we've budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund our OPEB trust, which will reduce our OPEB liability. In regards to mental health, the budget includes twenty-five hundred for a mental wellness expo in the community services department. Additionally, city staff will be exploring options to expand city mental wellness services or provide some options to the city council, which we brought back to the city council next fiscal year. And at that point, if the city council chooses, they could amend the budget at that time to, to add additional appropriations for those types of services. So the, the next step in, in our annual budget process, so tonight we're conducting the public hearing on July first, two thousand and twenty-three, then new fiscal year will begin as, as the old, as the prior fiscal year closes. So from July through December, our financials will be under audit. We will expect to have published audited financial statements by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. In August, staff will provide a unaudited projection for the fiscal year twenty-three year of where we think will end the, where, where we think the audit numbers will end the year. And then March of two thousand and twenty-two, we'll do the mid-year budget review and then start the process all over again. And then during the year, regular financial updates will be provided to the city council. So staff's recommendation is that the city council would conduct a public hearing on the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four operating and capital improvement program budgets, master fee schedule. master fee schedule, position classification and salary schedule, and appropriations limited, and after receiving comments and testimony, adopt the following resolutions. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions you have.
Thank you, Will. Does any council member have technical or factual questions for Will or other staff to clarify? Is it first you do? Okay.
Just a quick question. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. This is very effective. My question is, I know that you have reached out to the community. So we have, our residents provide you the feedbacks, and including that you just mentioned about page 26, that we have done a survey, but it seems like we have 174 responses. How many we sent out? Because I I know that is like a postcard style. So I and also in different languages. So how many we have been sent?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wu. Clara is going to come up and probably give the exact numbers. But the budget survey was not sent out by postcard, not mailed out. We had postcards available for people at our various events, and we had it online. So we don't know exactly how many we handed out. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, Clara.
Hi, Vice Mayor Wu and members of the council, as was mayor. For this budget survey, we only sent it out online. So that was distributed through City Beat, which reaches about 2,000 of us subscribers, our Facebook channels, as well as Instagram, and it was also posted on our website. So there are probably overlapping audiences who are on our website, who reads the beat and on our social media. So we don't have an exact number as to how many people we reached. That is unique that we can share at the moment. But we did not share send out any printed copies.
So what is the I I know that most of the residents receive one of a the postcard style things that we want to hear from you.
Correct. So that was a separate survey that is for our communication survey, where we wanted to understand how they are seeking to communicate with City Hall and receive news, and that is we did get our results, and we'll be sharing that in a later date when we talk about this Discover St. Gabriel publication.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other council members have clarifying questions? Okay, seeing none, I will go to public comment. Chief City Clerk, any public comment?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Our first comment comes from Chastity Jennings Nunez and reads as follows. Dear council members and city manager Lazaretto, the 23, 24 operating budget contains a request to fund a 54th police officer. The budget estimate is $119,000. According to the city manager, this officer would be specifically designated as a community outreach officer. The police department is not a social services agency. Police officers are not providers of social service interventions and treatments. The description of the police department on our website is the SGP D is a full-service law enforcement agency. The words "social service," homeless engagement specialist, social worker, mental health provider, et cetera, do not appear in any description or in the mission statement for our police department. I acknowledge and appreciate the police department for providing the services they are trained to perform, law enforcement. If the city wants a community outreach specialist and is willing to invest $119,000 to get one, then the city council needs to allocate that money to a clinical professional who has received the training necessary to perform community outreach as well as assist residents in getting those services. The excuse that those people aren't available is not acceptable. I heard in a presentation yesterday from Mercedes Marquez, Mayor Bass's chief of housing and homelessness solutions, about the many avenues for finding trained professionals to help provide social services in our city. At the very least, we currently share our licensed clinical social worker with El Monte. No one disagrees that we have more than enough work for a full-time social worker. I hope every city council member agrees that the Met team is an incredible asset for our city. Why can't the $119,000 or a portion of it be used to entice the current social work from a 50% position to a full-time position? I will continue to preach that developing, implementing, and managing social service programs should not be the responsibility of a police department. This has nothing to do with saying that police officers are not caring individuals. It is saying that if we allowed law enforcement officers to concentrate on law enforcement, they wouldn't need additional officers. Remove their social worker responsibilities and give them to professionals trained to perform them. And then I have one speaker card from Sonia Lynn.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sonia Lynn. I attended the budget meeting on Saturday. Thank you to the city manager. I have three small items to discuss. They're under $1 million each. On behalf of our pickleball committee, we are super excited to see permanent pickleball courts in the budget. Thank you, thank you, thank you. They're sorely needed, as is resurfacing of the existing courts, which is scheduled soon. One of the presentations that I saw talked about possibly adding fireworks to a city event. I don't know the cost, but I do know it's enough that some cities charge residents to attend their firework event. If there are funds available for a special celebration, I would ask that the city consider other options, such as a light show or continuous video of previous firework events around the world. This would be more environmentally friendly. Regarding the environment, I've seen the long lines at the compost giveaway at Smith Park. It seems that our residents are interested in gardening and other environmentally friendly activities. Our city needs to promote and encourage sustainability and best practices for our environment. And how do we do that? First, we set the example, which I think we already do, but our residents don't really know about it. So we need to communicate that. And second, we can increase the awareness of residents. I'm not talking about another adding a person to do it. I'm talking about using readily available information on these topics that we can get from, excuse me, local suppliers. The water company talks about reducing water sur- or usage, turf removal, drought-tolerant landscaping. The county will give us information on food gardening, fruit trees, shade trees. The garbage company will give us information on recycling. There's a lot of information out there. We just need to organize and present it to our residents. I I'm not into really community meetings because sometimes I don't see very many people show up. But here's the thing, it's not a costly item, and I say we can include some cost to cover this in our budget. The point is, we cannot afford not to. On that note, I end.
Thank you. So we have no further speakers or quest cards? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on the budget item? Seeing none, I will close public like a public hearing. It's now time for council deliberation and discussions. Anyone? Councilmember Chaka.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, mayor. I'm going to go back to the community budget survey. So it's really Clara, not you, but but thank you for coming up. I I just and I think Mayor Harrington could probably appreciate this more because he's been here longer than me. But I don't think we've ever had that many responses. I mean, this is a historical moment, so I have to praise Clara and and everyone else who who try to solicit, including myself, responses. This is this is fabulous, 174. It's never been done. Obviously, we can always do better, but this is a moment. And I find it really interesting, and I think it's so helpful for council to do this. I I've never been a real fan of surveys because of the small numbers, but 174 is a good number. And I found it really interesting that, you know, public safety is towards the end, towards the bottom, but I think the reason is because we're we're really taking care of our residents. Our residents do feel safe despite everything else that's going on around us. But I also found it interesting, if if people could could remember the the percentages, the mental health services, the improving our special events and saving for future needs in a rainy day fund. They all came about the same. I mean, there's, you know, third, fourth, and fifth, but, you know, 17.8, 17.2, 17.2. It's all the same. So I think it's something for us to really keep in mind as we move forward and and do adjust our budgets, because we always do, it seems like, when as the year progresses. But I I found it fascinating, you know, improving our city infrastructure. We've done more street repayment repaving than ever, but there's more that our residents want, and and I'm glad they're they're sharing that, so. And then second, our parks, which kind of goes on in line with what our public speaker talked about, you know, sustainability. You know, I again, I found that fascinating that, you know, there is such a need for green space and, you know, the a real mindfulness about improving our parks. And so I I just just thought I just needed to highlight that. I I think we, you know, we've had extensive, as council, we've had extensive conversations, discussions, meetings, our community budget meeting. So I I think we've done probably more than we usually have done, and and I'm very pleased with now will with the work that's been done. I I do look forward to a future agenda on mental wellness. I did attend that same meeting that one of the public commentators, Mercedes Marquez. There was a Zoom meeting yesterday, and she talked about homeless homelessness and housing, mental health. She's the chief homelessness and housing for for Mayor Bass in LA. But one of the things she did say, she she did recognize that as a small city, we just don't have the resources that LA City has, where they're able to have a team, you know, they can have five, six people for one person. We don't have that right now. But she did say that LA County is on the verge of adopting a similar model that they're doing in LA, because they're finally making some progress. And having LA County with the funding or allocated funding, that really helps us as a city, because we just don't have it. We don't have the monies to have a social services department. Even one person is going to be very difficult. But I think there's ways going forward, because there is much more awareness about mental health. I'm hoping with our police officers, and I'm very happy what they're doing now, and I think we need to continue to partner with them. You know, there there are some possibilities. So, Mark, I do look forward to that agenda item sometime the latter half of this year. But keep an eye out for LA County. I think from what we were told yesterday, there will be some funding coming to the cities. And I think Councilmember Ding has mentioned that so many times, that the county should be giving us some funding here. We can't do it by ourselves. So your wish came true. So we'll see that funding eventually. But but thank you, Will, and and your team for putting this together. And that was all, mayor.
Thank you. Anybody next?
And I would be happy to make a motion if there's there is a comment there.
Oh, yeah, real quick, I just wanted to thank the staff. They did a great job in putting the budget together, and we had a few meetings, and it was everything was hashed out, and so I don't have any other further questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, okay?
Yeah, it's thanks. Thank you, the mayor. Really, it looks like our, first of all, thanks to the the staff, the this report. And I thank you especially for the survey result. It's it's really, it's helped us. So, yeah, hopefully, next time we have more people can conduct this kind of survey too. But it's 174. It's it's already, it's huge already. But we we want to follow you, always want more, right? And and it's it's first of all, like, first two looks like we our city, it's it's a right direction, right, for the for the for the infrastructure. And we also think about it, always think about our park too, right? And we are lucky have the the firm from from the the state for our, it's Vincent Lugo, the, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 I see my microphone. So but it's the right direction, but it still need to improve. We need more, okay? And then, like, I agree that all this, the rest of four, it's a way we wanted to do, especially for the mental health. I I hope our city also have maybe can similar to the city of Los Angeles or or Pasadena, they have own health department. I think they should be a health department to to handle this kind of mental health. But the reality, I think our small city, it's hard to affordable, right? So it's better like it's cooperate with the county. I I really appreciate county have this kind of program, and they have the like some outreach person. I saw them, they go to all different events in our community, in our city or our neighborhood city, I see. See that they have a lot of this kind of the information to provide our community. So it's it's really, yeah, so if we can, like, and the chief also help to the connect to the our county to this kind of program. So I really think that's the right direction. It's a reality direction to to do that, okay? Ideally, we want to more people to serve our community, the mental health, right? And special event, there were last time, I always think we talking about a lot of two. And the rainy day, it's really good, so really happy right now. It's not just 17% where also it's reach out at 22 or something, right? And public safety, yeah, it's a similar, but I I think like mental health special event and plus expand that our the public safe safety should be for my listening, it should be similar category. If we have the we have a good help mental health to help the the community, it's also community have safety. If we have the more like a special event and the help people can go out and communicate our community, I think definitely will be reduced this kind of the the hate crime, you know, so keep our public safety. So it's a, yeah, it's a really appreciate the staff do the good job. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. I just have a few questions, actually just one so far. I think a couple others were answered. Go back to my notes. Can't find my notes. One thing I'd like to ask the council is, we did receive a request on May 25th from the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to add that to our budget if anybody doesn't have an objection.
Well, I I do object, because I think we need to have, just like with mental health, we're having a separate agenda item. I think we should have a separate agenda item also to also flush that out, because I think there's options. We've all we've discussed it three years ago. We had a contract. We put together a contract so we can be, you know, mindful, because at that at the time, we didn't have contracts with a lot of vendors, and we decided to make sure that everything was more formal. So I like to bring it back and for us to discuss it. We had one membership level. Would like to see, you know, if there's other membership levels, and if there's not, you know, can some being created? And also go back to the contract. So if we're going to spend whatever that dollar amount is for everyone to have the opportunity to view it and to be make sure that we are spending the money and we are being, you know, held holding any vendor accountable.
Okay, I think this is a little different situation, because we don't have a contract. This is a membership, just like we would belong to COG or belong to ICA or belong This is a membership, just like we would belong to COG, or belong to ICA, or belong to anything. This isn't a vendor, they're not providing a specific service for a specific amount. So I think when we cut that contract, that kind of changed the relationship, and they have other cities that they're working with now, and I think, they are the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce, we should be a member. As far as what that looks like, I think we can discuss it further, but I don't think we should treat this as a contract, because if they're going to be a vendor, then they need to be providing goods or services, which I don't think that's what they're asking. They're asking us to join the organization as a member. So I think there's a wholly different analysis there.
Well, I look at it as a contract, as a vendor, and I look at it like we did with other cities. We spent a lot of time putting that contract together, looking at other cities, and seeing, you know, what kind of work is being done and provided. It is, I think, a lot of money. I mean, we're talking about different options here. I mean, we could be using the money, well, mental health is the first thing that comes to mind, but I think it warrants a separate agenda item versus just making a decision tonight on this budget. So it gives also the public an opportunity to look at it and see, is it really a membership, or is it really a contract? Because we proposed a contract, and with very specific deliverables.
Yeah, I think that, to me, that boat sailed when we cut them off. I think.
The boat's back.
No, but it's not, they're not, it's not the same thing. Before, they were very, I think it was a very different type of relationship, and the city kind of just gave that one up. And I think this is more of a membership. Many cities have memberships in their Chamber of Commerce, and they have, obviously, there's different entities, different levels of membership. I think this is very important for us as the city to have a, be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. We're not even a regular member right now, much less a sponsor member. I think that it doesn't look good from our side, from the city, it doesn't look good from the chamber side, that the city's not a member. I'm open to another discussion, but I don't want to turn this into a contract. I mean, I do see it as something along the lines of the COG. I mean, we don't have a contract with the COG, and they give us deliverables and all that stuff. We don't have a contract with the ICA, and they.
Well, I've only seen chamber contracts, I haven't seen membership per se, but I think, I think it just warrants a separate discussion, as opposed to just at the last minute changing our budget and adding something in. I think we need to be mindful, it is a good amount of money, and so let's just have that discussion.
I don't think this is last minute, I think the city received it, and the staff, you know, they can't put something in the budget, you know.
Well, I, exactly, so that's why, just like anything else, you know, we're back to mental health, or there'll be some other things. I mean, we talked about the fireworks, they put, I believe it was fifty thousand dollars, but we can allocate that any way we want within special events. Fireworks was brought up, but again, I think we should spend the time, and not just all of a sudden, you know, we get a letter and jump on it. You know, we had a lot of discussion about it in the past, and I think we should need to continue to have that discussion. So there's two of us, maybe we should let.
One more thing I'd add, we literally just waived five thousand dollar fee for a one-time event. And that's, I understand, it's a, it's a good organization, they do a lot of good for us. This is a year-long engagement, that's every day, it's not a one-time thing. And so they gave a list of what they're doing. I'm comfortable with, I don't see it as a last-minute budget add. I think it's, we should, if we want to join the chamber in the fiscal year, we should allocate that. They've given us what the costs are, it's twenty-three thousand dollars for a year. I'm comfortable with that, I'd like to hear from the rest of council, if you're okay with joining the chamber at that cost.
Thank you, Mayor. So we are talking about the twenty-three thousand dollars annually. So, well, I think that we should look at that way, because look at Rosemeat Chamber Commerce, and Monchi Park Chamber of Commerce, I think they're kind of very active, because they do have a city to support. But I just want to see that, because we are also a business-friendly city. I believe that the Chamber of Commerce that play a very important roles. So I, I'm okay, but I don't think twenty-three thousand will be a really big issue, you know, compared with what we can, you know, put that as, you know, that will be helping us to define us as a business-friendly, because we actually, we, as a city, we will need more, you know, our entities that will be helping us, you know, in different territories. So I would say it should, it should be a good idea to have, you know, a Chamber of Commerce that, to associate with city in any way. So that's my comments. Thank you.
I would tend to agree with Councilman, Vice Mayor Wu, that us being a member of our own city's Chamber of Commerce is a good idea. So, you know, I, I would, I would support that, yes.
Mayor, can I say, okay. The question is for our city attorney. So for the this, right now, our mayor bringing up for the amendment for the budget, so is it okay or not?
Yes, the council has the ability to add this item.
To add, okay.
The council desires to do so.
Okay, I want to clarify. So current our budget is still not include the, this budget yet, okay? Thanks the Chamber of Commerce to send the letter to us, and they, they are also try, even like, oh, I know, a couple, two years ago for the contract, but they, like, still want to build a relationship and a bridge with our city. Okay, so, yeah, so that's good action, I feel, okay. And, but, you know, I just want to say, because I'm chamber the member, too, attorney, city attorney is okay, I have a comments, too, is it fine, or not?
Is it fine for you to comment?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I comments, because I was member with the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, that, you are not precluded from commenting.
Okay, all right, okay, that's, I want to clarify, okay. So, yeah, I saw the Chamber of Commerce also have a lot of activity in our city, to help our, like, even last year, I saw a couple small business, they opened the, the business in our city. So they do the, it's a very tremendous good job, and for us, yeah, and so we need to, like, this kind of connect to the, our city and with the Chamber of Commerce to help our, the community and help the city. So, yeah, we city also, I saw that our economic development or community service, all the department also did a good job for the outreach, but I still need to add on the, want to hope the Chamber of Commerce to add the value for our city, you know? So, yeah, so for the, most the council member, if, okay, so, yeah, for me, it's, yeah, the question is for the city level, so this kind of membership, it's just one level for our, us, just for the city? Is it, did you, the only for our city, city of San Gabriel, or so you invite a neighbor city to join, too, or not? No?
Just San Gabriel.
Just San Gabriel?
We can optimize the program for you, for the city.
Okay, so that's just a special, the membership rate, right? Okay, all right, okay, understanding. So I'm okay, yeah.
Okay, is there another discussion, further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So there's actually five resolutions, so just in one motion, move to approve the staff recommendations, the five resolutions, with the amendment for the chamber, to add the chamber expense, which was twenty-three thousand? Is it twenty-three thousand, twenty-three thousand?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask him one more question. It's previous, I think they were contracted, is how much, it's total, how much?
I believe it was thirty-five thousand dollars was the last year we didn't, that we supported the chamber.
Okay, so actually, right now, it sounds like it's reasonable, the membership, yeah.
Is that a second?
Yeah, that's, that's I want to clarify, you know, so.
I'll make the second.
A second, you go ahead, a second, you go ahead, yeah, I, I, it's fine.
I'll go, too.
I just want to go see some movie, okay?
Right, so I didn't, which, which councilor seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, you go ahead.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Munchaka, Councilmember Chan seconded.
Motion passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, next item, please.
We have no continued business. Our next item is new business, item A, youth diversion outreach program approval. Sergeant Nat Quinn from the Police Department's Community Engagement Bureau will make the presentation.
Evening, everyone, Mayor Harrington, Vice Mayor Wu, Councilwoman Munchaka, and Councilman Chan and Ding. Thank you for this opportunity, I appreciate it. Fortunately, the room cleared, no one's going to hear it.
It'll live forever on YouTube.
I'm here to actually present our youth diversion program that was recently developed. Actually, it's been in development for over a year now. It's been developed specifically for youth offenders who commit crime in the city of San Gabriel. The goal of the program is to provide these youth offenders with an alternative to incarceration. So it's either incarceration or entrance into the program. It allows professional clinicians, counselors, social workers, the opportunity to develop leadership, goal-setting, parenting classes, anger management for our youth instead of incarceration. They also provide health services for juveniles and their parents and guardians. If a juvenile is accepted into the program per their parents or guardians' consent, they will be provided a personalized program, can last anywhere between three to twelve months, depending on the severity of the offense. One of the positives that come out of this is obviously, well, the many positives, is the fact that it will take care of possible future offenses, misdemeanor offenses that the city cannot deal with, and also, it will not affect the city budget at all. This is all funding that is allocated per the L.A. County. So I am actually here for any questions, open Q and A.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. Any council questions, factual questions?
Yes, Mayor, may I?
Vice Mayor Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly. This is a program that will be helping the young, you know, the young children, or they may have made a mistake, and we don't have to take the actions to prosecute them, but we are able to provide them more services that will not leave them any records. Is that, is that correct?
Absolutely. This program actually encourages, this is encouraged prior to the booking process, because once a, an individual is booked in the L.A. County system, there is a record of it. The program actually encourages non-booking. To give you an example, too, we've had ten incidents this year since January of juvenile offenses that were bookable, and those were, they were booked, they were released on a citation, and all ten of those offenses were actually, would have been eligible for this program. We would have prevented these juveniles from even accumulating a criminal record. I think a bigger, a bigger deal was with our schools, because I oversee the Community Engagement Bureau, we do, we have a school resource officer, who this year, I calculated, has had thirty-five interventions with juveniles who have had misconduct on campus. Those thirty-five incidents actually qualify for an arrest or juvenile diversion. If we had the program at the beginning of January, definitely these, these kids would have been eligible for that diversion without being arrested.
So this is a hundred percent funded by the county?
It will not cost us anything, it's already allocated by the county.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Quick question. So the situations you talked about, those thirty-five incidents, does this mean that those individuals were booked and arrested because we weren't under this program?
The thirty-five incidents I'm referring to that happened on campus were very minor. There wasn't any prosecution desired by the parents in that situation, but going forward, say those incidents were to occur again.
Yeah.
Those thirty-five incidents, we could refer to the diversion program instead of just counseling the child at that moment, and we could send them to the diversion program with professionals who can take care of the issue.
Okay, so in those cases that already happened, there was no diversion and there was no arrest? Neither thing happened, is what you're saying?
It was, there was a lot of mentoring regarding with our school resource officer. However, there was no diversion available at the time.
I see, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ding, any questions?
Okay, if we, if current, if we don't have this program, so how can we handle our city, the police department, how to handle this kind of incident?
Without the program, we still follow our policies and procedures, is, which is, we will book a juvenile offender per whatever offense that is that they're being charged with. That offense could be forwarded to the county probation office, which will take care of the issue after the fact, the litigation issues regarding the juvenile offense. We have no control over that. Basically, we're handing it over to the DA's office.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, clarifying questions? All right, do we have any public comment?
No cards for this item, Mayor.
Oh, there's one in the audience.
This is going to be my next lieutenant here. I just have a question, is this only for minors?
Yes, it is. It's, it's a juvenile diversion program for a reason, so we are, the target audience is our juvenile offenders, because of the fact that some of the late lax laws that are going through L.A. County right now, this will give another option to rehabilitate and mentor the individual instead of having them face incarceration.
Okay, that was, that was my only question I had.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on this item. It's council discussion, who would like to start? Councilwoman Munchaka.
Great, thank you for your presentation. I had a few questions. So this is for both first time and repeat offenders, right? It doesn't have to be, they don't have to reach a certain level, like ten offenses, and then they have the diversion program. It could be one time, or it can be thirty times, is that correct?
That is correct. Prior to, obviously, implementation of this program, they would just be going through the court system, it would be a revolving door. This would give them something to strive for, an extra set of accountability, I guess you could say. But yes, everyone is eligible, however, not, not everyone could possibly be accepted into the program. There is a referral process. Obviously, certain criminal acts will not be accepted based on the severity of it.
Okay, okay. And you kind of alluded to this earlier when you talk about the lax in the criminal system right now, but I'm just wondering, you know, what is the motivation for even the guardians and the, and the juvenile to go to the program if they know that the system right now, based on the current DA, is quite lenient? They might just be able to get out versus having to go through this year program, or less, I guess, three months maximum, twelve months. I mean, are these people that understand, these juveniles and their guardians, understand that even going through the DA, that they might end up in jail, or can they kind of beat the system and say, I'd rather take my chances with the DA, because he's probably going to let, let me go anyway?
I am actually still under the notion that accountability and progress means something. I know we started this city council meeting a couple hours ago with the Pledge of Allegiance. I, these are things that we need to think about, which is, the Pledge of Allegiance starts with I, but it ends with all, and. And I think that's the process we have to go through. And to, under, to explain this to the parents, that all, this, everyone is accountable for this, it would benefit you, it would benefit the community, it would benefit the juvenile, if we were to go through this program. Obviously, we're not forcing anyone to attend anything, however, "all" is something I am hoping for, that the parents see in the program.
Okay, Sergeant. You say so. I'm just, I'm just trying to think, when you counsel these individuals, I mean, some of them seem to be pretty smart, and they just know they'll be out right away. But I guess, when you're working with the guardians, and since they're juveniles, maybe I'm thinking of the adults more so, hopefully, the parents do understand the long-term impact, versus just getting away with it this first time.
The long-term impact is significant, and I, and I know I gave you a very generalized concept of what the program is about, there's a lot of career-building in it. There's a lot of mentorship to push the juvenile into the next level, if they want to progress in society. Delinquency is not the cure for a lot of this, and we're here to teach them that, and we are hoping, yes, we are hoping they buy into the system, yes.
Okay, I hope so, okay, thank you. How do you deal with the homeless, you know, the juveniles who are homeless, that perhaps may not have a guardian, or if they have a guardian, they're living so far away? Sometimes, you know, they move between cities, so they just happen to be in San Gabriel at this point in time. You know, I, I think this is a great program, I'm glad they're given options, but you know, if you're homeless, how do you get to these programs? How do you get a parent, if you're under 18, how do you get a parent to sign on to this, because they may be so, at another city, they may not be with you? How, how do we deal with that?
The city, as far as city-wise, there are no boundaries to this, however, if we set a boundary out of state, then that's something we can work with. We could forward it to whatever jurisdiction that is, to see what programs they have offered. If it's here, if it's within the county, if it's within one or two counties, the system will, it will continue to take care of the issue. It will attempt to locate parents, it will attempt to locate a guardian. I will admit, the program is based on guardianship. So, in order to pass the program, there has to be guardian participation, however, it's a case-by-case basis, things can be worked out, worked out. Guardianship, in actuality, it's, it's, the reason it's a part of the curriculum is because it's an extra sense of, source of accountability, actually, a source of oversight. And that's why they, they plug the guardianship in there.
Okay, well, I can see how some guardians don't want to have the accountability, they don't want to go through this program, so could a juvenile just do it on their own, if they can't rely on a guardian? Or, or they have to have a guardian?
I, I will not say no to that, there, there are possibilities, yes.
That's good to know.
Preferably, yes, to have a guardian there is preferred, if not, things can be worked, things can be tweaked, programs can be personalized.
Okay, that's good, that has that level of flexibility. And then lastly, under the analysis, there were some pretty impressive statistics with San Francisco Juvenile Probation Department, you know, 30 years of diversion training, that, you know, reduction by 56%. Then you have Clinton County, Georgia, you know, reduction of 80% in the 20-year span, and then, you know, there was one other program here. But I guess, I just have to ask, you know, why are we so late in the game? You know, we, I, I know a lot of it is personnel and staff, because this is what I heard last night at the presentation I was at, we just don't have it. But why are we just doing it now, why, you know, not like some of these other states? Or even San Francisco, for that matter, they've been in the process for the last 30 years.
If we look at it in the sense of San Francisco, Los Angeles County, you could consider us late in the game, but I will tell you this, based on the research that I've done, we are the only city in this area that is about to implement such a program based on approval. I can tell you this right now, the surrounding agencies around here do not have a program. The nearest one is literally Pasadena PD, which they've had a program for a while, and the LA County Sheriff's Department Temple Station. And that's because by default, they're a county agency. We would be the first to implement that here amongst, for example, Alhambra, Monterey Park, Temple, I'm sorry, Arcadia, and San Marino.
So, but was it a personnel issue, staffing issue, cost, or all of the above?
You know what, I cannot speak for those agencies, I would assume it would be all, some, none, I don't know, but I can't really speak for them. All I know is, at one point or another, the cities that I just mentioned did implement something of that nature, it just never followed, they never followed through on it.
Okay, do you mind if I ask the chief, inter, chief? Because I know you've also, you've worked in other cities, why, why haven't we had this before here? I mean, you've been in our, in our...
And that is an excellent question, Councilwoman Munchaka, so when it comes to these type of programs, I know the sergeant mentioned it's free to the city as a cost-wise, as a budget item. However, there, there is a lot of time and effort on the human resource aspect of it. And that's where Sergeant Quinn is taking the lead on something of this caliber of a program, because the program management side is actually going to be the time and cost side of doing business. And I've known that, coming from another agency, I've seen a lot of programs come and go, because there hasn't been much time and attention spent on it. So if you have somebody that's passionate, and a bureau that's dedicated, and a supervisor, and oversight, and a chief that has this vision that we're going to carry on these marching orders from here on out, to whatever the deadline date that we choose, it's going to be successful, as long as we keep on continuing to pay attention to these type of programs, and making them a priority in our community. I would think it's a derelict duty for a police department just to implement a program and just let it go to the wayside, and I've seen that happen. And in cases like a juvenile youth diversion program, it's something that I would probably not be willing to give up so easily. It had to be done, because I was forced to do so, but other than that, though, it, it just takes a lot of time and energy on personnel, to make it successful.
So, that's interesting, because the sergeant really has a full plate, you, you do a lot, I mean, you got the whole Communication Bureau, and now, this is funneled through the Communication Bureau, this diversion program, is that where it should be, or?
Correct, yeah, so if you recall, back in January 2023, we allocated Sergeant Quinn into the bureau, we did a little bit of reorganization in our department without the added resources. And that was my task from early on, probably mid-fiscal year of last year, to start looking into the future of what we could do with our recent personnel that we have. And I'm not going to take the credit for what Chief Harrison has done in 2017, when he created the Community Engagement Bureau. He created the School Community Engagement Team, and also the Mental Valuation Team, under the umbrella of the Community Engagement Bureau. However, for six years, it was lacking direct supervision, they were, they were answering to our detective bureau, which is already heavily tasked with other types of follow-up criminal investigations, and a slew of other type of collateral duties that they have to deal with. So putting Sergeant Quinn in there was the key to the success to all these project managements, moving forward from January to end of time. And when we're asking for these 54th officer positions, that's what we're looking forward to, is not to supplement patrol officers, but to supplement these type of bureaus that are making a positive impact. Because this is not the first and last project that Sergeant Quinn is going to be tasked with in the Community Engagement Bureau, he's going to be working on other things, on top of the other duties that they've already been working on.
Well, thank you, God bless you. That's all I have to say, that's all, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so Nada, thank you for that presentation, it was excellent, I think this is a program that will serve us really well. It goes hand-in-hand with our prosecuting, our, our misdemeanors. I think we'll have a little more hold of the reins on this, I think Vice Mayor Wu and I had this discussion a little earlier, that our goal in all of this is not to, not to incarcerate people. That's not the goal of the city, our goal is to have low crime, and our goal is to have no crimes committed. I think this is, this is a way of lowering the crime rate by, sometimes people do just need to wake up, like, hey, where's your life going, what are you doing, what are your plans? This type of diversion really assists in that, because sometimes the guardian may not have good guidance, but this is a, that's like the way you explained it, it's actually helping them be a better guardian as well. And that's the whole program, we're not trying to put people in jail, that's not our goal, our goal is to have people have a nice, happy life. I really appreciate this effort. Let me see, yeah, I know. So, I, I do see like, it, it, to me, it seems like it says there's four, at least four people involved. I just wanted to know kind of the burden on the, on the officers like yourself and whoever else is implementing, it said there was four people?
There are four involved, I, I'm actually one of the four, and my bureau, the other three will handle the, the rest. And I will be, I will be honest, I know it's cliche and everything, but in, in actuality, if something is important, we make the time for it. Our kids are important, our future is important, someone's going to wear this uniform the day I take it off, someone's going to be chief, when Chief Nakamura leaves. Someone has to take over that position, and who's to say we're not developing that future right here?
Hopefully, we budget a new uniform, not that one.
I promise not to hand it down.
No, but like, my point there, though, is like, so just from logistically, if, if another officer that's not in your bureau is, detains a juvenile, would they call you to, to take it over? Or how does the, functionally, operationally, how does that work?
They could, so in, in actuality, if we are not going to, say, I'm on vacation, and I'm off duty, say, my bureau is on vacation, that we're off duty, a referral could be sent to us. So what it is, is, I don't want to get too, too caught up in police lingo, but if we can identify somebody, if they are local, then it's easier for us to just take down, put it on a name card, refer it another day, and that is possible to do. However, if it's a person who has offended in New York, Florida, cross-country, that person would be harder to track. And in that situation, unfortunately, we would have to book that individual. However, now, remember, booking is not the end of the world for this individual, after the booking process, I could still show up on my regular workday and do the referral then. And we could still get that juvenile through the referral process, so it's not the end of the world if they get booked.
Does the, does that record go away if you divert? Is there a mechanics for that?
We do have a sealing process in our records bureau, and that could be sealed.
My only concern is if someone was, it looks like they have to make the decision kind of in a very timely manner, in order not to get booked, is that correct? Like, if someone commits an offense, and let's say, no one is available, for whatever reason, the officer's more than likely just going to book them, right?
I will be honest with you, sir, another cliche is, I am literally here 24/7, my phone is available, if we arrest somebody at 2:00 in the morning, I will pick up that phone, and if I have to do the referral at 8:00 in the morning, it, it will be done.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just saying, from a timing and logistics, they don't have to make the decision on the spot to divert, they can, there's some time, like a day or two, or what's the time?
There's definitely time where allowed, and last time I checked, it is 48 hours, so we do have two days to do it. Within those two days, I can actually just make that decision if I'm on vacation, I actually could, so.
Perfect, yeah, that was just, I was just worried about the logistics of it, because we want full participation, obviously, of people that are offending, we want them to kind of figure out where their life's going, and let us assist you.
We are going to do the best we can to keep every possibility, every, every offense out of the record, for these juveniles to develop their lives.
Great, thank you, so with no further questions, do we have any motions?
I have a motion.
I'll second. To approve?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed a recommendation. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Ding, a second by Councilmember Chan, let's please vote. Thank you. There we go, thank you.
Motion passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, great presentation.
Thank you, everyone, really appreciate your time.
Thank you, next item, please.
Purchase of Rides SG vehicles in the amount of $303,428.15. Community Services Director Perez will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Harrington, and members of the city council. Oh, wait, we have a presentation coming up.
Mayor, excuse me, can we have a break? Sure. A urgent need for a five-minute break. The next item, please.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, in front of you, we have an item for the purchase of Ride SG vehicles in the amount of $303,428.15. And I apologize in advance, this item was amended a couple of times because of the amount, the totals changing, so. Moving forward, the city currently contracts with TransDev, which used to be First Transit, for the operation of our Ride SG Plus program. The current vehicles, which are owned by our transit provider and leased by the city, are 2013 propane vehicles and are in need of replacement. Staff is proposing tonight to purchase four new vehicles that would be owned by the city and operated by the transit provider. And Metro has confirmed that the city can use Prop A to fully fund the purchase of the vehicles, and there are funds in the 2022, 2023 budget available for this purchase. The city's purchasing policy authorizes the city to participate in cooperative plans or programs to purchase vehicles, services, or equipment at the lowest possible cost. Staff proposes to purchase four wheelchair-accessible Braun Voyager minivans through a cooperative purchase. This type of vehicle is currently being used by other agencies and has proven to be adaptable, it's a little smaller than the current vans that our, our Dileride program uses, and so it's a little easier for the drivers and, and easy for the passengers to get in and out of. Creative Bus Sales will provide the vehicles at a cost of $74,485.04 each, including tax, delivery, and fees. Also included in this cost is the cost for graphics to be completed by an outside vendor, and a custom bike rack. New Image Auto will provide a custom tow hitch for the bike rack, and the total cost for the four vehicles, as mentioned previously, is $303,428.15, which is totally eligible for Prop A funding. At a future meeting, staff will bring forward an amended agreement with TransDev, which would reflect the city's ownership of the vehicles. Here's a photo of the vehicles, as you can see in that photo on the left, that is the wheelchair ramp that goes in to the side, it actually pulls out, kind of folds up and pulls out, for the wheelchair accessibility. When the wheelchair, when there is a wheelchair in the vehicle, there is room for one passenger in the back, one mobile passenger, or ambulatory passenger, and one wheelchair, and one passenger in the front seat. When the wheelchair is not in the vehicle, there's room for three passengers in the back and one in the front seat. So there's a kind of an overhead visual of what the, the, with the wheelchair, what that would look like. But again, when there is a wheelchair in that back, in that middle row, there is only one seat in the, in the back row, available for an ambulatory passenger. And the images on the right are the images that the council approved previously, when we brought forward the, the logos for our new Ride SG and Ride SG Plus programs. And we have yet to determine exactly what, if it will be a full vehicle wrap, but that is a, a visual of what the, the design was previously that you had viewed. And so, moving forward to the recommendation, staff recommends that the city council waive formal bidding and authorize the purchase of the vehicles through a cooperative purchase. Authorize the issuance of purchase order for that cost to Creative Bus Sales for the acquisition of four Braun Voyager minivans. And appropriate funding for the purchase of the custom tow hitches, and adopt Resolution 2340, amending the fiscal year 2223 budget to increase the account by the total expenditure. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Thank you, are there any questions, clarifying questions from staff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, Repickoff, for the presentation. So, except we are buying the, the vehicles, because in the past, I believe it's last year, that it was proposed, we leased a car. And that will be like for, I believe it's like a three-years contract, something? So, besides that, anything else has been changed, for example, that looks like the apps, that we are able to download, so that is for all, all residents, that they can, just using the app, and just like having the Uber, that they can pick it, pick them up? So, is that still the same thing?
It's still the same, so we have not, we have not launched the program to the general public yet, we are going to launch that... We are going to launch that, planning on launching that July 10th. So we've done a soft launch. We're going to be inviting some staff and potentially some council members if you'd like to take that ride and, and try that. We're, we're hoping to, we should have these vehicles, should the council approve this tonight, we should have these vehicles relatively quickly. They have the vehicles in stock. And we're hoping to implement those as soon as possible because the, the vehicles that we are currently leasing, and you're correct with that, we are currently leasing those vehicles are, are old and they're having trouble getting parts. And so we've had challenges with some of the rides. So currently it's just the Ride SG Plus program, which is our former Dial-A-Ride program. And then the Ride SG program will launch July 10th.
So what is the life expectancy for each vehicles? I mean, for how many years that we need to change the whole cars?
I don't have that information, but I'd be happy to look into that.
Thank you.
With that information.
Okay, so we are, we are expect, we will be expecting to have like a soft opening ribbon cutting things on July 10th. Is that, is that a proposed day that we are able to try the Ride SG?
We, we hadn't planned on a ribbon cutting, but if you'd like us to plan that, we can, we can likely do that. We, we, like I said, we will be able to get the vehicles relatively quickly. We likely, we will be getting them and they'll be a blank canvas, like the ones that you saw in the images. But then we will have the wrap or the, the logos done on the vehicles. And we'll kind of do that as quickly as we can.
Does the car, they come with like warranty for how many miles? Is that something very similar to the, the car dealers provide? Or actually, we, we will need to take care of the car by ourselves?
That, that comes as part of the, the, the operation and the maintenance will be handled actually by TransDev. I was going to say First Transit because that's what they were. They will be operating and maintaining the vehicles. And I, I've had a conversation with the city manager that likely what we would want to do in that contract that will be coming back to the city council for the contract with TransDev would be that we would want to have those vehicles come to our city fleet maintenance for like once a year to have them confirm that the, that the maintenance is taking place like we would want it to.
So we are still limiting the car, the Ride SG that drives only inside of our city? So it's not like five miles outside of the city or, or how, 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 how do we do it? I mean, is that, is that like a, we only focus on like a city only? If they just need to go to like Arcadia Shopping Mall or maybe county area? Are they still able to, you know, drive them to that place?
So the Ride SG Plus patrons, which are our prior Dial-A-Ride patrons, they are able to go five miles outside the city. So they have to meet that, that, they have to either be disabled or be a senior resident to be able to do that. They're still able to go to doctor's appointments or shopping trips out, five miles outside the city. With the Ride SG program, which will be for the general public, that will be inside, within the city limits only.
Okay, so that is still $1 for each person?
Yes, and that, and that also, they, they will not be picked up at their home location. They will have to go to either one of our existing bus stops or there will be virtual bus stops.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with clarifying question?
Councilor Ding? Just follow the, the, the vice mayor, the asking, so the lease contract, how much cost for our city? Each, each year, if we leased from the contract, the Dial-A-Ride?
I don't have those costs in front of me. Those are currently funded by Prop A as well. It's, it's a monthly cost that we, that we, oh, our city manager is going to look it up for us. We, we were hoping that with the, with us owning the vehicles and, and we had previously been told that it would be a cheaper cost for us, which you would think it would because we are owning the vehicles versus leasing the vehicles. I understand from TransDev that it will actually be a little bit higher cost because their costs have gone up exponentially with insurance and maintenance and, and all of that as well. So, so I understand that our costs are going to be higher than what they currently are with, with them, even with us owning the vehicles.
So you also bring out like the, for the, if the lease, if we lease, the insurance is relied to transit, they pay for it. If we purchase, we, we, we through our JPI to get the insurance?
Yes, I believe that's true.
Okay.
And the cost is $570,000 annually.
So it's really, that's good. That's meaning, yeah, it's the same money. At least, at least if, if for the manufacturer warranty, I know, at least there's three years, right? Yeah, for the, for the, for the manufacturer warranty. Okay.
Just, just to be clear, that was the full service cost, including the lease of the vehicles? That's not just the lease of the vehicles?
Include service, right? Vehicle itself probably is part of that, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so the, how many, like you say, how many the, the vehicle, we totally have four vehicle, right? So you mentioned have the ADA compliant, it's how many vehicles, two vehicle or is every vehicle have this capability?
It, it's all four vehicles will have that ADA compliance. The, the system, the RideCo system, which is what the software is that, that Ride SG uses, does not have the ability to say, we need a, we have an ambulatory passenger, we need a, a non-ADA bus. They basically go the closest bus to the closest location. And so all of those will have the, the ADA accessibility.
So, so each vehicle have an ADA. So actually, no vehicle can access like a person, right? Based on the, the picture, right? So they, each vehicle I saw, based on your current vehicle number of six, it's two ADA C, right? Where one is in front, one's on the middle. Is that correct?
This, this photo shows that. I actually went to see one of these vehicles at TransDev last week. And in the vehicle, I saw the, the front seat was not set up for a wheelchair accessibility. It was a regular seat.
Okay.
The middle row that you're seeing there had the, had the folding ramp and came out and, and for the, for the wheelchair accessibility and then there were the three seats in the back.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too, because I think, maybe I misheard you. I thought you said there's one wheelchair in the middle and then one seat in the back. So, but that's not correct, right?
And, and I apologize that this is misleading. This is the information that they provided to us. When there is a wheelchair in the, when, when a wheelchair is riding in that middle row, there's only room for one passenger in the back row.
Okay.
Just because of the size of the wheelchair.
I see. So, so that, the, the graphic is misleading.
It's misleading.
Okay, so you cannot sit three people back there and the wheelchair and?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. So you already have me asking question. Okay. And so just also, I think it's a clarify, this is a, use the gas, right?
Exactly.
Not?
They're not electric.
Not the EV car, right? So do, do you know that they have estimate how much cost for the, for the, the mile, per mile, the gasoline?
I, I don't know that. They, they will maintain the gas. However, they will be maintaining the vehicles.
So?
So we don't, we don't, we don't pay the gas cost.
Okay.
And we did, we did look at the possibility of whether or not there, or did look at the option of whether or not there was a possibility of electric vehicles. TransDev, which again is our current provider, does not have the capability of maintaining or, or operating electric vehicles at this time.
So they pay the gas and city not paying the gas?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, all right, that's, that's it. Thank you, Rebecca. Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions anywhere? I don't have any questions either. Oh, public comment. I forgot, there's no one here, but do we have any public comments in line?
Speaker cards.
Seeing no one in the audience, I will close public comments.
Thank you, Rebecca. So I notice there's four vehicles. How many are, why do we need four? My understanding is that we use three and we have one for spare? Is that how it works?
Correct. So three will be on the road at one time and there will be one that will be a spare. Should there be maintenance that needs to be taken care of, that will allow then there to always be three on the road.
So with the vehicles we have right now, has that been your experience? That, I think you mentioned you can't even find parts for some, for the ones we have right now. But typically, is that what we've done in the past, is always have a spare?
There has always been a spare and unfortunately at this point, and, and this is why we're, we wanted to bring this item for sure tonight, even though the program's not starting until July 10th, is that at this point, there are not even able to be three vehicles on the road because they're having to utilize, they're, they're having trouble getting parts for our vehicles and so often having to use spares from other agencies for our, for our vehicles.
So there is a, a need?
A need.
For new vehicles. Okay, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Sorry, I, I, yeah, sorry, mayor. Okay. As for the Rhino that described, okay, if we have ADA, so we only have the three passenger we can get. One is front seat, one is the back seat, right? If, if no ADA, so we, on the, on the middle row, we still cannot use it, right?
Exactly.
So total, total just four passenger?
Correct.
From my understanding, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wu?
If you don't mind, I have, I don't mind at all. Thank you. So what about a driver? I, I don't really see information about a driver. Are we paying the salary? I mean, how, how, how do we pay them?
So operations and maintenance will be covered by TransDev.
By TransDev, so, okay, so.
The drivers are, are their employees.
And because it seems like we have four vehicles and each time that could be like maybe four people, so that means 16. And if, in the future, that we will have more demands on those services, we are able to add more. Maybe not the same rate. Is that, is that correct?
Vice Mayor Wu, one of the things that we really liked about partnering with the, both companies, not only TransDev, but?
RideCo.
RideCo, thank you, is they have software that tracks all this. So they'll be able to find out, you know, how many of the rides actually have a disabled passenger with able-bodied passengers. And we can bring that information back in the future. And maybe we need only a combination of ADA vehicles and full passenger vehicles. And so in the future, we can tailor our needs to what the public is demanding.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, sorry, actually it's not a four vehicle, it's a three vehicle when you operation.
Correct.
Yeah, it's 12 persons. Okay, not a 16, okay.
All right, so do we have any, I don't have any questions. I read it. I'm good. Any motions, yeah?
I'll make a motion to accept the, the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Chan, a second by Councilmember Manchaca. Let's go to the board, please.
Motion passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Uh, next item is City Manager's Report. All right, council comments and conference meeting reports.
Yes.
All right, Vice Mayor Wu stepping up.
Well, I have a, you know, I have a report, so that is really good. We had a break before we have. Well, first of all, thank you, mayor. And Councilmember Ding and the City Economic Development Team and I attended the International Council of Shopping Center, ICSC, conventions in Las Vegas. The city team approached a close to 20 national brand businesses and introduced them, the major developments in our city. And we also promoted opportunity sites suitable for their businesses. So I would like to bring this up to my colleagues and also to the public as our economic team has prepared all marketing materials really well. These materials, including like a QR code directly linked to our city's website, then they are able to see our projects. Additionally, our team pre-planned the booths to visit. So despite the, the fast pace, the result was productive. And they're following up with the vendors and retailers that have shown serious interest. And I would like to extend my special thanks to our community development director, Aldo Servantes, economic development manager, Caroline Verladi, and management assistant, Erica Ortiz. We had a meeting prior of the trade missions to ICSC and I must admire the professionalism displayed by our team, making our city truly presentable. And the second report that is about JPIA, Councilmember Chan and I attended a new elected officials academy hosted by this California Joint Powers Insurance Authority in Huntington Beach. We had an opportunity to meet other elected officials that in, you know, they got elected from last November and from the city like a city of Durati, Calabasas, Suritos, Needos, Silpich, Camarillos. And the academy provided us with very valuable informations on analyzing our roles, relationship and challenge in local government. So we learned about the fundamental of local government and how to become a high-performing board members. So that is a really very effective, very informative. And overall, it was a really great academy. And also, there is a new business that I received a request from an association that called Haka Federation of USA. The president of the association, Mr. Tom Chan, is the business owner and also the homeowner in the city of St. Gabriel. This organization is proposing to establish a sister city partnership between the city of St. Gabriel and Ban Chao district in New Taipei City in Taiwan, the Republic of China. According to the request email, Ban Chao district has population of 550,000 people that they are interested in creating a platform for exchange and collaboration that will contribute to the social, cultural and economic growth of both places. The Haka Federation of USA has a strong tie with the Ban Chao district. And the council member from Ban Chao have also expressed a keen interest in establishing a relationship with our city. So in light of this, President Chan emailed me and would like to request permission for him and his staff to do a presentation at our next council meeting. The goal is to introduce to a potential friends from Taiwan and discuss the possibility for collaboration and sign MOU in the future. So I firmly believe that this partnership will be an excellent opportunity to benefit the St. Gabriel Tourism and Marketing Improvement District. So therefore, I would like to gauge our colleagues' opinions on introducing, including the, the sister city topic in our next general council meeting agenda. So this way, the Haka Federation of USA can give their presentation and we can determine the next step we want to take. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just give, I know that we can discuss putting things on the agenda. I would say regarding that, we already have a sister city. And you can only have one according to the sister city organization. So if we do that, I don't want to lead them down the, like a long road and then not be able to take action. So just so you know, I wouldn't want to make any promises to anybody.
I understand that because they are also open for friendship city, which is no limit on the.
Yeah, gotcha.
As a sister city. Thank you.
Gotcha.
We also have a policy too.
Yeah, we created one because we had a former council member that was trying to make every city our sister city.
That's why we, we should really review the policy because I think that was, well, some others, other cities have done that where they have multiple sister cities, friendship cities, and then they have a full-time staff member too that is just managing all that, so. So, yeah, I think we need to kind of review the policy.
Yeah, and maybe staff reviews policy and puts it on a future agenda. We can, I don't know about the next meeting, but we can get it on there, check the logo.
Yes, I also forwarded that email to a city manager, so he will be sharing that to everyone.
Perfect.
Yeah, I wanted to also, well, I'm not sure if it should be an agenda item, but there was a public comment earlier about sustainability issues. And I know I've met with, with Greg and some residents in the past where we're doing a lot of sustainability practices. But the public comment was very accurate that we're not communicating it to our residents. And, and I guess we could have a community meeting focused on sustainability, but, you know, perhaps there's better ways, maybe having a site on the website, you know, listing. But if you talk to Greg, our public works officer, I mean, he can go one by one, all that we're doing. We just don't communicate it, promote it, whatever you want to call it. And so, you know, I just like to see something done, so we don't keep having those type of public comments or, you know, these meetings, or Greg always being approached, well, what are you doing? What are you doing? Because sustainability is very important for all ages, but especially our young. And I know I get those questions all the time. And, you know, maybe there's just a better way of addressing it. So I'd like to raise that with the city manager. And if, I'm not sure it's an agenda item, it's just, how do we communicate better?
We'll look into that. No, no problem at all. We'll look into that and see if we can add some info to our website.
Okay, great. And then second, just a reminder, because there's been a lot of excitement, I guess. We have our summer kickoff, Surf's Up on June 22nd, from 6:00 to 9:30. So that kind of kicks off our concert series, so just a reminder to everyone. And there's a, you know, every month, there is something from June to August, June, July, and August. So check our website, check our social media. But St. Gabriel's going to be a happening place, as always, this summer. So anyway, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chen?
Yeah, real quick, well, Vice Mayor Wu already mentioned the conference that we both attended. It was very helpful and some, some good lectures and, you know, helpful things for newer guys like me. So it was a good conference. In addition, May 27th, I attended, well, she's sadly, she is not our supervisor anymore, but Catherine Barker had her annual salute to veterans event at Arcadia County Park. And I attended that, and it was lovely. And a lot of resources for veterans, very helpful. And May 29th, which was actual Memorial Day, City of Rosebud had their Memorial Day ceremony, which I attended. And I presented their council members with certificates of appreciation. And, yeah, and that's about it, yeah. And the event that Council, Vice Mayor Wu and I just attended, very helpful, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I echo the Vice Mayor Wu regarding the ICSC, it's really good. We are teamwork, representing our city of St. Gabriel. And then we try, also try through this kind of event and find that some, our community really wants, like a fitness center, and some different kind of the supermarket, and some franchise, the fast food. So hopefully, they can come into our city, give it to our city, the community have the more variety, the choice. It's for community. So, yeah, it's a really good event, since the economic development do the, they do the very good presentation. They, they have the, a lot of the fresh drive to, to, like, let the people to know our city, the future, the plan. And I also have the, actually, just the last time the council member, I think I don't, a council meeting, I don't have a chance to speak out because the technology power, okay. At that time, I attended the CJPIA, they have the elected officers summit, the conference. And it's, it's, I, I really appreciate the JPIA, they do a wonderful job. They, they always want to like education our, the council member or new elected officer, or even elected officer, consistent to understand how to do the like management, our risk management. So, and help our city to like all the staff running its, its wellness to understanding which one way we have to understand it, don't, yeah. Otherwise, if you don't, if you don't do the, if you didn't do that properly, it will be costing money for, for our city. And, and under that meeting, we also discuss, say, okay, if some city, recently they have some lawsuit, their city will be paying more money, but actually, our city will be shared the pool too. We don't want to see these kind of things happen. Hopefully, all the neighborhood city do the good job, you know, so, you know, don't have any lawsuit too, right? We just, actually, they say just reduce the lawsuit, because the, this kind of good risk management. I really want to encourage all the department, different department head to, because they have different category, even our city manager, to, to attend this kind of seminar, because sometimes you already forgot, but because the, every year they do this, it's, it's a good reminder, you know? Yeah, it's, it's, I really want to suggest that. And last weekend, I have the chance, two days, to join the, for our Chinese community, the event in the, holding on the Santa Nima Park Race Park, called Dragon Bowl, the festival. And it's, a lot of people attended. And it's also the, it's one kind of festival in our Chinese community, it's famous. The Dragon Bowl, it's not on the, on the ocean, it's not on the river, they're on the glass, okay? So everybody?
It was kooky, I went.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was wacky and kooky, it was fun.
Yeah.
When I was younger, I used to do real dragon boat racing.
Okay.
In the, in the, in the ocean. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
This was fun. It was like an inflatable, long, hot dog-looking thing. And you just straddle it, and then you just run. It was fun, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the council, but Chen, it's, it's have a chance to, to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, I, I, I participated, but I didn't win. But, but I win, I think I win that because I'm, I'm, I'm participating, okay? Okay.
We all had fun.
Yeah, so it's really colorful. If you have a chance, you can some watch the YouTube too, you know? Yeah, okay.
I took some video, you can watch it later.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Chen. All right, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I can top that. I don't really have any comments tonight, thank you. With that, we have no closed session. I will adjourn till the next regular city council meeting on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, 6:30 PM.